Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone. Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Altman-Cloth. Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg. Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of minutes for October 18th, 2022.
So moved, Rosick.
Second, Ellis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to comments and suggestions from the citizens. I have one blue card. If you wish to speak, please fill out a blue card and one of our staff will come and grab it. When you come to the podium, you have a maximum of three minutes. It's not a two-way dialogue. It's an opportunity for you as a community member to share your opinion with the council on any topic you wish. When you come, please state your name, your address, and what city that you live in, please. First up is Jane Owen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For a change, I'm here on a positive note. Next week is Veterans Day. We are lucky to have two veterans with us, one Army right here and one Coast Guard back there, the toughest of the tough. I wouldn't want to do that job. I happen to be a veteran, too. I will remark that for Memorial Day, there was no recognition or acknowledgement from this council. I was disappointed. In previous meetings, two different Aldermen sitting here said we were going to celebrate Memorial Day, which is not what you do for Memorial Day because it recognizes people that have passed when they were in the service. It's not a celebration. So I encourage you to participate in activities for veterans for the month of November. The biggest local one, which will be next week, Sunday, at 11:00 a.m. in a little establishment on East Wisconsin Avenue for the VFW is called Soup for Troops. It is the same time as the Packers game, so you can watch the Packers. You can have your adult beverage. It is $7. I'm not in the VFW, so no, I'm not in any way tied to this. And the proceeds, there's also a silent auction and raffle. We'll go towards putting care packages together in the next weeks and sending them overseas for the folks who can't be with us for the holidays. So I highly encourage you to participate in veteran activities in November. The middle school is doing things, other organizations around town, and recognize the people who work so hard so that we could all be here. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that topic. Any other comments from the audience this evening? With a no comment scene, we'll move on to committee or consent agenda items. I'd like to entertain a motion for the Consent Agenda Item 6A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That moving forward, we're going to our committee reports, starting with Finance, Consider Act on the Budget Amendments for the Grants and Donations Received and the Dispatch Transition Expenses dated July 1st through June, excuse me, through September 30th, 2022, basically, third quarter.
Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan-Murray.
Yep, these are your third quarter grants, donations, and budget amendments. Grants and donations received this quarter total 22,925. The majority of those going for pickleball maintenance, memorial plaques at Chapman Park, developer trees, and some for the K-9 funding, which is just getting started. If there's any questions on the items that are listed in your packet.
Alderman Kavieski.
Do you mind if I just mention where funds should be directed for the K-9? So while there are some funds that have hit the city directly, the funds associated with the K-9 fundraising efforts should be directed to the Waukesha County Community Foundation in care of OPD K-9 or Okanawak Police K-9 Program. All of those funds will be consolidated, and a check will be issued to the city upon reaching the goal for implementing that program. That'll help mitigate some of the staff time associated with collecting those various checks, which are all very needed, and we're very grateful to that, but look for information associated with fundraising efforts and where those funds should be directed via social media and the website.
Great. Yeah, we'll recommend that people go ahead and write their checks to the Okanawak Area Foundation.
Waukesha County.
Waukesha, not Waukesha County Foundation. If they need to drop them off in our office area, that's fine. We'll make sure they get there.
Thank you so much.
Alderman Kavieski, would you please stand?
Get the model.
Can you show everybody where they can get that cool sweatshirt?
Oh, yeah.
I thought this was going to be really good. And can you bend over? That's at the end of the meeting.
PG, we're on you, too.
So there'll be various apparel and items to support the K-9 program. This is a sweatshirt. We have 50 sweatshirts available. It is Okanawak Police K-9 Team. You can get that at the police department. They're $40 a piece, and all proceeds go to...
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
For the sweatshirt?
No.
We'd actually have a new model one more time. Yeah.
With Ellis.
Second, Kavieski.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Under Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3074, authorizing amendments to $3,708,758.45, City of Okanawak, Wisconsin Industrial Development Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2015A and 2015B. This is a Bruno Real Estate LLC project issued back in August 31st of 2015.
Before most of you were here and before I was here.
I was here.
Yeah, but you didn't sit there. We issued these bonds, and subsequent to the issuance, the federal government has seen in their wisdom to change the indexing of the interest rates from LIBOR to SOFR. And all this does is track the federal law in terms of affecting that change with these bonds, which is required by federal law.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Under Protection Welfare, Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3069, granting the 2022 to 2023 Class A Intoxicating License, Fermented Malt Beverage License to City Spirits LLC at 1290 North Summit Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. The city received application for a new Class A intoxicating liquor malt beverage license for a new business, City Spirits, that will be located at 1290 North Summit Avenue. Currently, that space is occupied by Sonoma Sellers, and the owner is selling the business. And the new owner will be taking over effective November 7th of 2022. And so the current licensee, Mr. Frownberry, is surrendering his license effective November 7th if council chooses to grant the license to the new licensee. And it will be surrendered on that day, and then I will issue the new license on November 7th, as long as council grants it. The licensee meets all Chapter 12 codes, city codes, and also state statutes.
Questions or comments from council for our city clerk? Alderman Kavieski?
I'm in support of it, but I just find it kind of interesting that the business owner would have a contingency that he wouldn't release it unless we approve this. I understand the thought behind it, but if he is selling the business, he wouldn't be able to maintain that license.
If the city, if they're closing or the transaction falls through, and he surrendered the license, say, as of today, then he would not be able to operate that business and sell any alcoholic beverages. I mean, he could be open, but he couldn't sell anything.
He might have to reissue that, too.
And so it's a protection for both the current licensee and the new licensee or the new owner. So that's why we do it, because we only have two council meetings a month, so.
Any further questions? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Rosick, so moved.
Second, Altman-Cloth.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Welcome, City Spirits. Next item up, Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3073, to adopt the 2021 Waukesha County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chief?
And I'll just do the opening, and then the chief will jump in. So City of Okanawak is part of the overall Waukesha County area. Fall under this plan that Waukesha County put together, looking at potential hazards, working closely with our Emergency Management Director, Chief Bowen. We looked at things in the city that we felt we should submit and potentially get grant monies for in order to purchase. So that is part of the plan that's here tonight. The information in the packets is just a few short pages from it. The document itself is 678 pages, so we opted not to print that out for everybody. But the big thing to remember here is if we want to get any grant funding, we will need to pass by resolution acceptance of this plan. So I'll turn it over to the chief, and he can give you a little more details on it.
Thank you for that, Mr. Frye, Mr. Mayor. As discussed, city staff and ourselves worked on this plan, actually, last year with Waukesha County. Every five years, this plan gets resubmitted. It's a requirement through the federal government. So this plan was worked on through Waukesha County, all of our staff, and the district, and the communities that we serve. Submitted materials that we have addressed over the last five years, as well as different benchmarks with regards to calls for service, incidents, training that we've done, and that all got put into the plan. So we pulled the 19 pages related to countywide initiatives or local initiatives that are included in the packet. The benchmark said it, it's 678 pages. Have gone through that. A lot of interesting information. If you want to go to the Waukesha County Emergency Management website, you can go through the whole plan. And with that, now with the adoption, we would be eligible to apply for three different federal grants for assistance and funding. Some of those things are backup generators at our well sites, message signs, you know, if we have to do an evacuation, spill control and containment with all the lakes, rivers, and streams that we have, as well as a site that if we have large storm damage that we can bring the debris to until we can completely get rid of that debris and damage. So just some of the items that we highlighted as communities and locally here to potentially get some grant funding for.
That's quite a comprehensive document. Thank you for all your work and all the public safety folks for working on this. Do we have any questions for Chief Bowen? Alderman Rosick?
Chief, you've read every page of the 609-page document, right?
I may have not gone word for word, but I did go through all 698 pages.
I know. Alderman Shellpepper has read all 698. No, no.
It's free time.
Any further questions? Alderman Kavieski?
Is Okanawak a regional player in this plan, or are all the communities kind of aggregated individually?
So there's local things for City of Okanawak only, and then there is the regional Western Lakes Emergency Management. So like the messaging board, something that we can all use that, you know, hopefully we have a better opportunity to get the grant funding because it's collective and will be used more often. Some of those are under the Western Lakes, but then there are local things such as the generators for the wellhouses, for buildings, spill control, that kind of stuff that are locally here for our community.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved. Rosick, second.
Any further comments or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Under Public Services, Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3070, awarding Rockwell Park Phase 1 Construction Contract and Budget Amendment. Mr. Hepner.
Good evening. This is a project that we rebid due to only receiving one bid originally and a high price. This was bid out this fall. We received three bids this time, and the low bid was Yankee General Contractors at $499,392.50. This project I put up here just have his map of what we're doing. It's everything in color. So this is Phase 1 of Rockwell Park. Includes site removals or demolition, site grading, de-watering. A big portion is installation of what we call ready rock block. It'll be along the shorelines, restoration of the other shorelines. Another big component is kayak launch. We'll have three of the four going in, so that's number four. On follow, number three here, which is our B R accessible launch. And then I'm going to show you a quick design of what these steps will look like in a second. And we also have rip raft, fuel stone, and then site restoration. That's all part of Phase 1. Let me just flip to, is it tight? One of the questions came up in committee is on the LaBelle side, can you get your kayak or canoe in? And the answer is yes. So this gives you a general look at what the ready rock block, it's like big retaining walls. So this is a surface that steps up. Here's the other surface. Here's your ground. And then as you come, here's the water level. So yes, you'll be able to access, basically, this entire section here in blue along LaBelle, just underneath the dam for that. So it's a great way of doing this and handling it. The only component does not include is 22, and that'll be in Phase 2. That would be the boathouse being renovated into an accessible kayak launch. Both SEH and myself have worked professionally with Yankee. They know what they're doing. They do this work regularly, so we're excited about having them as the low bid. Financially, we would be using about 380,000 of city funds that have been set aside for this project, an additional $150,000 of donated funds from the Build Rock Well and the Friends Group. As we've done before with many projects, they do have the funds, but we would not sign contracts until the money's put into the city accounts. And one quick thing on finances, currently, the Friends have $282,000 roughly in their account for this project. $103,000 is set aside already as restricted for Phase 2, so it leaves us about $180,000 for Phase 1. And we obviously will cover that within the 150, and we'll also be bringing construction management for this project in two weeks, and this will also cover that. So we're excited. A lot of people have worked hard behind the scenes. I know one person's in the audience behind me, Chris, and her husband, and many other folks that have been involved. And continuing the course, there'll be a lot more things coming up. So thanks to them for all their hard work. So recommending approval of Resolution 22-R3070 for Rockwell Park Phase 1 Construction, awarding contract to Yankee General Contractors. The total project, including contingency, is 529,392.50. And we do have a budget amendment of just under 150,000 of donated funds. Be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Alderman, Alderman Kavieski?
I'd like to thank Chris and Frank and everybody who has put a lot of time into raising the funds and moving it forward. I've always been an advocate for the portage elements of that. I think it's really going to change the use of our lakes in a very positive way. So I'm glad that this is being brought forward with the funds associated with it. And in committee meeting, I mentioned it would be probably a good thing to bring the plans back before council and the committee as a whole, just to kind of review before we get to the Phase 2 engineering and design. But I'm excited to see it move forward. I'm excited to see the utilization of this for the next summer.
Alderman Rosick?
Craig, the first time you brought Phase 1 to us, I think the original bid, I can't remember the first bid was, we were coming in way high. It was like 6, 700 grand.
It was 678,000, yes.
So you made a decision, which we supported, which was to wait on bidding this out till fall. We hope that we get better prices. It worked out perfect, so I appreciate that foresight from you. That was great. We appreciate your leadership. Bottom line is we have funds in there to do Phase 1. I know that there were some tough votes on that night where we talked about moving into Phase 2, but I think the way this has been structured was good, and I appreciate your leadership. And thank you, everyone that's involved with this, and I'm voting in favor, so.
Any other comments? Alderman Shellpepper?
Yeah, I think Phase 1 has always been the less controversial aspect of it, and even Phase 2, just to be transparent about it, you know, if it's going to be privately fundraised dollars to accomplish most of Phase 2, you know, I'm not going to stand in the way of that necessarily. I was never a big supporter of the enhanced features that I think we've added to the park for Phase 2, so I'm probably not, you know, a supporter of using city funds for accomplishing Phase 2. I didn't vote for the final design because I wasn't present at that meeting. I think it was one of two meetings I've missed in the last two and a half years, and I think that actual final design was only passed with three council members overall. So I think it was like a three to two vote or something like that at the end of the day. I was gone. I think Mulder was gone. Rogers had stepped down at that point. And so, and now at this point, we've got Chris and Jennifer who are on board that weren't a part of that vote at all. So all this is to say is Phase 1 is great, never been the controversial aspect. I don't think Phase 2 is necessarily controversial. It's just a matter of, is that, you know, the most best use of taxpayer funds for accomplishing some of those additional features? And I received a lot of feedback from constituents on both sides of the issue, but a sizable portion who weren't in favor of some of those added features. So I'm just being transparent right now about how I could be coming down on that in a couple of weeks or months, whenever that comes back up.
Yeah, that's be something we'll be bringing forward. Obviously, Phase 1 was the restoration of the shorelines and the kayak. I think that was the key, and that's what you supported, and that's what we wanted to move forward with. And there'll be some further discussions, but I know the group, I believe, including the grant, we received probably already about 400,000 towards Phase 2, which is exciting. There's a long ways to go yet. So that'll be something we ought to discuss further. So I appreciate that.
Alderman Rosick?
Yeah, when's the work on Phase 1 going to be done? Do we have?
It won't be tomorrow, but it...
Because it looks great. Yeah, it looks cool.
No, actually, substantial completion in the contract will be April 1st. And then just the only other piece to that is seeding restoration, because the grass probably won't grow until early May. But ultimately, for next year, ready to go.
Ready for summer in the intense season during kayak.
Correct. So the nice thing is, by this change, and SEH is part of that discussion, is doing the work over the winter. Other than ice fishing, it doesn't get a lot of use in the winter, so this is a perfect time to be able to close the park, do the work, and not really affect the heavy use of it.
Awesome. Nice work. Thank you.
Alderman Kavieski?
One final thing. You just mentioned ice fishing. The park will be closed. No parking in that area. We have seen cars on occasion park there. That won't be open for parking over the course of the ice fishing season. With this work being done, and hopefully thereafter, it's not supposed to be a parking lot.
Correct. That's good PR. We recommend parking behind City Hall and using the launch if you're going to use follow week.
That's the right spot.
Like to entertain a motion?
I just want to remind everybody, this is a budget amendment, so it'll take a supermajority vote to pass.
So moved. Kavieski?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Very much. We'll get started.
Thanks.
And to Utilities, Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3072, awarding Construction Management Services for the 2022 Secondary Digestor Rehabilitation Administrative Building Upgrade Project. Mr. Freiber?
As required, we requested proposals from, and advertised for them. We ended up sending out five proposals to engineering firms automatically. We received four more additional firms' requests after it was advertised. We received three, excuse me, proposals back. All three were scored for the technical review. They were scored, and then we opened up the cost envelopes. After the cost envelopes were opened, we found one contractor or one engineer didn't follow the requirement to have 1,660 hours for their bid price, so we did not add them to the final technical review. When we did the final technical review, Rooker Milkie came in as the number one firm to do the construction management at a cost of $199,882. And we're asking for a 10% contingency for $19,988.20, for a total cost of $219,870.20 for the construction management for the second project.
Thank you. Alderman Ellis?
Here's my concern. Thank you for doing this bidding process. With Rooker Milkie, about five years ago, there was an issue that was brought up of how they were doing business with the City of Okanawak. Prior to that, over years, they were pretty much taking hundreds of millions of dollars from Okanawak in a very legal, but as far as I was concerned, very sneaky way. Derek, who was an alderman, had gone in, and the only way that he could receive...
I want to be respectful that we stand focused on the topic.
We are going to. My concern here is this. They took hundreds of millions of dollars, as far as I'm concerned, this is my opinion, from Okanawak. I can't see doing business with them at this point in time and being that this bid was so close. I think we should really reconsider. Now, I know I'm going to lose, but that's okay. I just wanted that on record, that we've had dealings with this company before, and whereas they may or may not do good work, I don't know that. The way they did prior to this administration here was, as far as I was concerned, very shady.
So is it, can we correct the comment on hundreds of millions?
Well, all right, I exaggerated.
Okay.
I exaggerated. A couple of million, a couple of hundred million, thousand.
I think we need to be careful in making statements that are estimates, so I just want to be respectful that, to all of our vendors, all of the community. While I appreciate your frustration, Alderman Ellis, I think we need to be careful in making some statements that may not be 100% factual. Any other comments?
Well, regardless, it's 100% factual. The fact here is that they took money out of Okanawak that, at the end of the day, they should not have.
And it's fine. That's your opinion, and I respect that you have that opinion. I just think we have to be careful when we make statements of numbers and volumes of numbers that we don't have the documentation, the support in front of us. Alderman Kavieski?
So I'm in support of the proposal as it's... So I'm in support of the proposal as is submitted and to award to Rooker-Milkey. I do understand the concern associated with Alderman Ellis's comments, and it was addressed in policy. And Alderman, or Derek.
Zort.
Did a nice job working through some of those issues along with other members of council, and some more checks and balances were put in place. So this contract is an award with a 10% contingency associated with it.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. It's not a contract that has a time and material overage on it. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware that the policies that are in place, regardless of the vendor that is assigned to it, will be overseen properly in regards to the dollars spent to the scope. So I appreciate, again, the concern, and I appreciate councils addressing the policy that made this, for me, an easy decision to work with that firm or any firm associated with the project.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Freiber? Alderman Rosak.
Not for Kevin, but to support Alderman Ellis, and maybe, not to correct the record, but it was hundreds of thousands or millions of overages over many years. I'm going to vote in favor of this because the leadership, we corrected it in policy, and frankly, the leadership at both Rooker-Milkey and the city has changed over that period of time. We don't have the same things happening. We went to this policy, which is not to exceed contracts, and that not to exceed contract has forced these companies to actually come in with a legit bid that they have to stick to, or the council has to make a budget amendment to allow overages beyond the 10%. So I believe in giving people a second chance. They have not won a construction management bid from the city for quite a long time, so I'm willing to give them a shot here on this. And frankly, they can't screw it up because they can't, it's a not to exceed at this point. They really can't do what was occurring before, and that wasn't really necessarily either Rooker-Milkey's fault. We allowed ourselves to pay for overages year after year after year in construction management. So that was our problem too, not really theirs, per se. So I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I do echo Alderman Ellis's comments, and I think that, you know, his points are well taken. So thank you, Kevin, for reminding us. It's always important to remind us of what happened in the past, so we don't repeat those same mistakes.
Any further comments or question for Mr. Freiber? I'd like to entertain a motion. The move, Kavieski.
Second, Rosak.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Thank you, let's move on to Consider Act on Resolution 22-R 3076, approving the budget amendment funding for the Oconomowoc Watershed Protection Program, share of the Lackla Bell Golf Course Creek project. Mr. Freiber.
Back in 2020, we came to, for the council, requesting the permission to join in a group of four, Village of Lackla Bell, the Lake Management District, the City of Oconomowoc, OWPP, and Prestwick Golf Course, to do a project on the Golf Course Creek. It's basically this blue line right here, follows down through the golf course. The reason we asked for this TRIM grant and the four groups coming together is to fix the runoff problems and also to fix a lot of the stream washout that are causing sediment and phosphorus to get into the Lackla Bell and the Oconomowoc River. The OWPP's mission is for the adaptive management program is to remove phosphorus so that we don't have to take at the wastewater treatment plant, increase our construction, to take and remove phosphorus at a highly expensive cost. This project is, when we get to it, is about 11% of the total project cost is the OWPP's. So here's the diagrams of the way that they're going to be doing the fixes. There'll be some seeding and plantings, stone and plantings, and also some sloping. Back in 2002, or excuse me, 2020, when we originally asked to be in part of the TRIM grant, we were hoping that we would get $225,000 grant from the DNR, which we did get part of that, we got 209,454 dollars. And then at the time, we thought the project was going to cost us 325,000 dollars. Of course, because of COVID and everything, costs have increased, as everybody knows. So when the total price came in on the new, when we bid the project, it came in at 375,381 dollars and 16 cents with a 25,000 dollar contingency. Picking the four of them, four groups, each group would be paying 41,481 dollars and 79 cents to do, plus the 209,454 to get to the 375,000 dollars. The sections in red here are the three sections that are part of the TRIM grant. These are the worst parts of the stream at this point, so this is where we would do the work. Right now, the Village of Lackla Bell would be the recipient of the TRIM grant, they're the ones that applied, they would forefront the money for it, and then once the project is completed, each one of the groups would be invoiced for their section of the money. So this is what it looks like a lot of times beforehand, these are the ones we're working on. This was actually done by the Village of Lackla Bell on the same stream, upstream from where we're at. In 2020, they did the installation. Again, this is 2020's installation, and this is what it looks like now as of November 1st, 2022. This is what we'll be working to get to with the reimbursement of the TRIM grant and the work that we're going to be doing on the Golf Course Creek. This would be a budget amendment because we were originally approved for 25,000 plus 3,000 for the grant application, so I will need to have a, excuse me.
Six-two.
As a budget amendment, we would be for 16,481 dollars and 79 cents.
So I'd like to open it for questions, council? Alderman Spiegelberg.
I just have one question. So you said 25,000 in contingency is in that amount already?
Yes.
So there's a chance that that 25,000 dollars would not be spent?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Whatever doesn't get spent will decrease our value, but at this time, that's the number we're using, just like we would if we were coming to a contract.
So maybe like 6,000.
So, Mr. Freiber, with the effect on primarily Lackla Bell and everything downstream, we have, there are three municipalities that own property on Lackla Bell, correct?
That's correct, sir.
And so right now, one of the municipalities isn't contributing individually, they're contributing through the Lake District, but so are the other ones that are then asked to kick in twice. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, you got to remember that OWPP is a watershed-wide program and not specifically city.
Correct.
In this case, the city was not asked to participate, but the OWPP, the Watershed Protection Program was.
The reason they asked the water, again, OWPP, is because we're, are, with the adoption of the Adaptive Management Program and the OWPP, we're basically designed to do projects outside the city limits that will keep the water quality better in the Oconomowoc Lakes and Oconomowoc River, so that we don't have to take and do major capital project increases, building at the treatment plant, just to remove phosphorus.
And so funding for the OWPP comes from where?
The wastewater user rates, except for 75,000, it comes from the levy.
Gotcha.
Which is because of our stormwater.
It's not a tax levy item.
Oh.
Great, I just want to make sure we have those facts on the record. Alderman Rosak.
Yeah, actually, I'm in agreement with the mayor. It's interesting that we had, I'm ultimately, I think, going to vote for this because I think it's the right thing to do for the environment, the watershed, for what we have as a city attempted to do with the Watershed Protection Program. What I'm concerned about is that, yeah, we're paying twice essentially, our ratepayers are paying twice. We're paying money into the Adaptive Management Plan, and we're paying money into the La Belle District. But this isn't on public property, this is all on private property. Alderman Shellpepper made a point during the, so I don't want to steal his point, but, you know, the reason there's more phosphates coming into the lake is because of Prestwick building a golf course in a different district that's not La Belle. So, you know, at the end of the day, I'm going to vote for this because we signed an agreement with La Belle to do this, even though they aren't honoring agreements with us. In the wastewater, literally in the same kind of issue wastewater management, they're suing the city over our fees that they've agreed to, but I think it's right for us to honor our agreement, so I'm going to vote in favor of it, but boy, I'm not happy about this.
Alderman Kavieski.
So can you go back a couple of slides where the dollars are broken out? So I am also echoing Alderman Rosak and the mayor's concern in regards to it coming back to the wastewater management and the watershed program. Before Prestwick came in and provided their enhancements to that property, I don't think the phosphorus was as extreme as it is now.
Well, prior to 2020, that's the reason why we looked at this. I mean, the Lake Management District, we got a lot of people making comments that, hey, there's huge phosphorus. We were doing testing on that stream and seeing a lot of sediment and phosphorus, so that's why the group got together at the time to look at putting the TRIM grant together.
Granted, but an active golf course that is providing the chemicals associated with the greens and the maintenance associated with that, I think our, what is our target reduction, 5,000 pounds?
A little over 5,000 pounds in the first permit term.
And this is almost 10% of that?
Yeah, it's a huge.
It's a huge chunk. And I think this creek and Rosenow Creek are the two main points of influence into Lackla Bell in regards to phosphorus levels. Again, I will support it, but it, I would have liked to see more participation by Prestwick and the Village of Lackla Bell in this formula, because it's in their area, it is private property that is for profit, they are charging good money, it's a great location, but they're making money, and they help the causes. We don't have currently any way to mitigate that with policy through the city, right?
No, we do not.
So.
It has to be mitigated through the state, and they do have contact with the state.
I hope they continue that contact, and it helps to get them on the right path. But again, to have somebody within the watershed have this kind of impact on the things that ultimately we're responsible for as a regional processor of that water, and have us participate in that cost share in this formula, I think is generous as a, in the spirit of cooperation, which should exist across multiple agreements with our neighbors.
Alderman Shellpepper.
What creates the phosphate, what generates the phosphate in this stream specifically?
Mostly it's right in the soils. It's kind of, you know, it comes right out of the soil.
And so is this the only stream of its kind in the entire watershed?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Can you go back to the?
So how come this specific stream then is such a generator of phosphorus? What is unique to this stream?
It's not unique, there's a lot of streams.
But, well then, how come, but you said this is the easiest cost opportunity to eliminate this amount of phosphorus at one point source, and I don't know if that's the correct terminology for it.
For a.
Why is the bang for the buck so good here?
It is, it's the biggest bang for the buck. I'm only paying 11% to take and remove 541 pounds.
So what's so?
For me to do, may I finish? For me to do a stream bank restoration, that probably is going to cost me 2 million dollars if I did it. On another creek, I'm only going to get about 200 pounds for that stream. It's a smaller stream, but I'm only going to get 200 pounds for it because it's not, there's not as much erosion in it and stuff, but.
Why is there so much erosion at this creek?
Oh, can I just jump in real quick? So this creek actually starts from north of the bypass where there's farm fields, and it flows through that area. So it's picking up.
So there's no other streams that have farm fields in the watershed like this?
Oh, no, we're not saying that, they're addressing.
I'm just trying to understand the specific situation that's occurring at this stream that's making the phosphorus bang for the buck so spectacular, and there's so much phosphorus right here.
I believe it's the largest drainage area that actually sits north of the golf course for this, that they've also been working with the landowner on up there. So this stream, you know, flows down through the golf course, but it's picking up every, a large area that's north of the bypass up there, and that flows down underneath the bypass, and then comes down through here, is illustrated by that blue line that runs up and down on the drawing, so, and that's a farm field.
Okay, well, we just said, we just said there was lots of other streams that were similar.
So, you know, then during the construction of the golf course, they didn't do very good with their erosion control methods. That's what got all the mud and sediment out there, so.
Okay.
You know, a lot of that's been addressed. Now we're addressing what, you know, some of it, you know, some of it's coming off the golf course, I'm not going to sit here and not say that, but I'm going to say a majority of it's probably coming north of it, and this is our chance of catching it just before it's going into Lackla Bell. And that's why we're getting such a big bang for the buck, that's why we're seeing so much phosphorus reduction off of this versus other streams that Kevin talked about, and Darrell's probably just dying to talk about standing behind Kevin.
Well, let me say, I guess from my layman's perspective, it seems that the unique situation here is the golf course, and I love the golf course, I golf there, it's a great place, I'm not holding that against them. I guess I'm just not translating to why, and you say it's coming from the Watershed Protection Budget, which is wastewater, you know, service fees, that's still taxpayer dollars coming from city payers in a large majority. And so I guess I'm trying to understand why the state is not holding this phosphorus, you know, polluter accountable. Why does it get turned around onto us to have to mitigate what is clear is a unique situation at this stream because of the golf course?
Because we're regulated, is a simple answer.
I can either remove phosphorus at the treatment plant, which gives you no value at all in the lakes and streams of lake country, or we spend that dollars instead of a capital project of, like I mentioned, Waipun's doing a capital project to remove theirs down to .075, 28 million dollars. So if I did a capital project at 28 million dollars down at the treatment plant, the only thing that that helps is right below the treatment plant.
What is the penalty if we do not hit our poundage of what we took out in our limit?
They have the ability to take and revoke us from having the Adaptive Management Program.
Okay, and so then?
Then we're going to do the 28 million dollar capital project.
And we think that the state has the legal authority to do that, that if we challenge that.
They do.
In the courts, that that would be something that would be upheld, and we would be forced to pay a 28 million dollar capital project.
They force you to do a facilities plan, and then whatever it takes and does to remove the phosphorus.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of, yeah, I've heard a lot of individuals in the legislature recently talking about these specific items, and I think there's a lot of pushback that's going to be happening at that level. I think the state has some outsized expectations that probably aren't appropriate, but I guess that's neither here nor there. I don't think I have any other questions right now, mayor, you can pass it on.
I agree with that comment 100%, Alderman Shellpepper. We've never liked the fact that, because of the fact that we're, you know, one of the few regulated points along this whole watershed, that it drops on our shoulders. It also drops on our stormwater. That's where we contribute money to the OWPP, because there's an area of the Oconomowoc River downstream, Reachhead 26, where testing will determine whether or not our stormwater utility is in compliance with the same thing. So anything that we can do cleaning up, and that's why we contribute to the OWPP through the stormwater, is because we're also getting the benefit from that. So this is overranging, but it is, it's unfortunate that all the regulations fall on us because we're already regulated, that all these people upstream can do whatever they want, and, you know, they can have cows standing in the stream, they can plow right up to the field edge, and I'm not saying farmers are bad people, farmers are very good people, but, you know, it comes down to dollars.
But I think we can point out, those are pretty spread sources, right, from all the farmers, it's kind of diffuse. I'm looking at kind of a specific polluter right here is what I'm picking up from it.
But the OWPP looks at the entire watershed, they have projects throughout the entire watershed that Darrell has talked about many times on every, all the things that they've been doing, and this started out with Tom Steinbach, because we felt that it was better off instead of spending 28 million, and all we're going to do is clean up the water that's going downstream, it's let's clean up the water coming down from upstream so that all the rivers and lakes are going to be healthier in the long-term future.
I get that, and I understand that, so.
This is a budget amendment, so it'll be also a super majority vote, so it will take six to pass.
Alderman Kavieski.
One more question, maybe if you wouldn't mind coming up to answer, you probably know the answer as well, but from a watershed protection. What is the parts per million, I believe, coming out of this particular creek? There, you, you recently did a, an overview at the Lake LaBelle Management District meeting. And you showed this creek and I believe it was Rosenow Creek as the two major points of influence, influence associated with phosphorus into Lake LaBelle. And it was significantly higher than, let's say, Fowler Lake.
Yeah, and I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but they, they are regularly coming in well above the, the, the limits that we are, our target is to meet over our permit terms. So there's actually a proposal going forward that we're discussing with the Lake LaBelle Management District to really do a very fine-tooth assessment of that. After we would do that, I would feel much more comfortable in delivering, you know, an estimated number of pounds coming from different sources. Unfortunately, I don't really have good numbers on that.
I, I, again, I'm going to support it. The reason I mention that again is because I think if we took care of Rosenow Creek next, we'd probably be within our eyesight of hitting our targets. Is, is that fair to say? You remove 400 and almost 500 pounds here, you deal with something kind of similar in Rosenow Creek. And now the 5,000 pound target is.
Yeah, it, it gets a lot closer because we're, we're probably the 2400 to 2500 at the treatment plant just by decreasing our, or increasing our ferric chloride feed that decreases the phosphorus leaving the treatment plant. So we're down to .55 coming leaving the treatment plant. We're required to be below .6. So that decrease from originally .95 down to .55 has almost taken 2,500 pounds of that 5,000. So that's, that helps a lot. The next permit, if we get it, will be along 7,000 something. And the third permit term means about 9,000 pounds we have to remove, so.
It's, it's awesome. And I think this watershed program is awesome. It is, it was visionary from Tom's point of view, and it's been duplicated in other areas of the state. I think as this moves forward to, to many people, the reason we're talking about it so much is because the capital expenditure associated with not doing this is so big. So we need, and we've led the way in this. So having these discussions about specific points within a watershed that contributes so much phosphorus to the overall load, I think should be talked about at least on the state level if that's where the regulatory powers lie. Because it doesn't, doesn't lie with us. We can't penalize a specific entity outside the city for those loads. Somebody should be able to, to offset those costs. And I, I, I'll leave it at that.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
So since this area tends to be sort of a hotbed area for the phosphorus, are we sure that what we'll be doing will mitigate that? And or how do you, how do you keep on top of that or analyze the situation? And are we going to be back here at some point in the future because we have to redo this?
Well, we're going to be, we're going to have inspection on the project so that we make sure that they do it right. Like I, like I showed them on the last slide here, this is what it looks like after we do pro, you know, did a project, we didn't, the village of Lake LaBelle did. Same exact techniques we're going to do. You can see that there's no washout in the stream bank after two years. After it's done correctly, this, we should, you know, hopefully never have to go back to this stretch again. And we'll, we can always use that 541 pounds that is theoretical because they just, it's everything that the DNR wants is math anyway. So how do you take, what they do of running through the swamp program, it kicks out a number and it tells us how many pounds by the different techniques we're using in their stream bank sections.
So this potentially is like a one and done. Do you feel like this has been very effective?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what it's supposed to look like and should look like on, on most streams. That's the, when you look at the deep cut banks, that's where it's losing a lot of the soil. The, the silt is going downstream and it's carrying the phosphorus that's right in all the soils.
Has any work been done with the golf course to try to help mitigate and reduce the, the level of phosphorus being put on any types of fertilizers?
That's all runs through the DNR. DNR's, and I, I, they've got litigation going and I don't want to comment on that kind of stuff. It's stuff what they're doing with the stream banks and stuff.
Understand. Alderman Rosak.
Yeah, I made this comment when we first started contributing to the watershed program. Phosphorus is kind of a, a little bit of a made up boogeyman, so I do hope the state looks into these numbers. I mean, I understand functionally that we have to eliminate this, but one of the number one contributors of phosphate, phosphorus rather, in the watershed is leaves coming off of trees. It's natural. So I, I do hope the state with, if we get new leadership, starts to address what we are being forced to do in these watersheds. Because it's a little bit of a boogeyman that doesn't really exist. It's something that's been naturally happening for thousands, you know, of years around the area. And phosphorus coming out of dirt and coming out of leaves is something we're never going to be able to really eliminate. So I think the only reason this is really controversial tonight at all is because of who we're dealing with, which is a, a village who's sued us and who is not honoring their agreements with us. And that's probably the only reason we're really discussing this intensely tonight.
Alderman Shellpepper.
One who's also taken it upon themselves to tie different issues
Correct.
into other issues. So the way they've approached the boat launch, for example, has been totally irresponsible. Also has an impact on the lake, maybe not phosphorus, but I got to think other types of effluents are going into the lake because of the construction that boat launched and the type of chemicals that are happening there. But all I've heard from our neighboring municipalities is how it's not their problem. You know, they, it doesn't, it doesn't impact them. So I, there's been a lot of disingenuous behavior that's, that's occurred. Does the, does the phosphorus being emitted from the creek have any relation to the DNR fines oversight currently imposed on Preswick?
There, the oversight of Preswick and the construction process had to do with the plans that were put in place for their construction and whether all those components were followed accurately. And there's some things they've been asked to undo and.
But it's my understanding there's been fines that have been imposed on Preswick because of the actions or lack of that they've taken.
I know that they have moved into the enforcement arena. I'm not aware personally of the fines, so if.
Okay, well, maybe I'm, maybe I'm.
I think that is a potential outcome.
Okay, okay. Well, because, because, because that's what the other piece of this is, I'm also trying to understand is, is if phosphorus is tied into the, the fines or, or the oversight that's being provided over them, that they're going to be responsible and on the hook for fixing this one way or another, or they're going to go under, or they're going to be dealing with, with state issues. So there needs to be some transparency upfront so we can understand what the obligations are that Preswick's going to incur regardless.
So I'd, I'd like to just give you a brief summary recommendation from my perspective. I don't make a lot of comments, as you know. This watershed.
Since when?
In meetings I do, but not in council. Yeah. This is, this is an outstanding program that I definitely feel we should support. I do feel the way that this was put together is unfair to the taxpayer of the city of Economock. I also feel that we need to lead by example. And when we say we're going to do something and it's good for the whole community, we need to support that and move that forward. This is one of those examples. While some of the comments about some of the other municipalities are accurate and our frustration levels are extremely high, if we lead by examples, our hope is that we can collaborate more with them moving forward. I would strongly support that the council moves this forward and we lead by example rather than taking other issues and things and not just focusing on this issue. But I do want to be very, very candid that I am not happy with this either. I feel exactly like Alderman Rosak stated at the beginning. This is wrong with the way the financial thing is set up when, but it was done before I became mayor. It was done in the right way and it was done with our eyes wide open. That's a personal opinion. And it's up to council, but also remember, council, this is a super majority vote, so you really need to take seriously which direction you want to go on this vote moving forward. Alderman Douglas, you had your hand up.
My question's going to be a lot easier. So look at these two pictures. Why is the left side not have rocks?
Left side needs to be worked on yet.
So what you're telling me is.
They did one side of the, of the bank when they, when the village project, they only did one side of the bank. The bank still needs to be done.
Does that picture taken at the same spot?
Yes, it is.
So they're going to have to basically re-rip all that up and do the other side? On the left-hand side?
All up?
Are you going to have to?
No, we're not going to, not this piece. That's, that, that would have to be a future project.
Eventually.
Stand at the microphone.
I'm sorry, no, that's not part of the TRIM grant project. That was, we just showed this because this is exactly the kind of stuff we're going to be doing in the next project when the village did this. They did the.
So what I'm saying is when they did it, they only did half the project.
Right.
They did the project that they owned. That's their, their land on the right side. On the left is the golf course land.
No comment. Alderman Shellpepper.
So why does the village of Lake LaBelle, why are they doing it? Just out of the goodness of their heart that they're putting the money in then? I mean, what's, what's their obligation to do it? Why do they, why, what's going, I mean, obviously you, you don't work for them, but what's, what's, what's the explanation?
The lake.
Yeah, it's, it's the Lake LaBelle. I mean, they, they want to keep the, the lake management district in Lake LaBelle wants to keep the sediment and the phosphorus out of the lake so it doesn't turn, you know, green and set, where you have sediment build up inside the lake where you can't do your skiing and fishing.
But the town doesn't feel the same way?
I, I can't answer for the town.
This isn't an untamed property, though.
No, this is all completely on the village.
Not on city property either.
Preswick and village. And the village.
So back to the phosphorus, though, involvement, Preswick, what's, what's going on there? Do you guys know?
They weren't, they're not involved as far as I know.
So you don't think any of the oversight that's currently taking place from the DNR has to do with phosphorus emitting from that creek? Okay.
Not that I know of, no.
Alderman Ellis.
I'd like to make a recommendation.
Where are you 20 minutes ago?
To approve the budget amendment fund for 22R3079 for the Economock Watershed Protection Program. Share of the Lake LaBelle Golf Course.
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you, gentlemen. Call roll, please.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Thank you. That's moved forward. Next on to our next item, staff reports.
Nothing, nothing tonight, sir.
No staff reports coming forward. Reports or comments from Alderman. Alderman Mulder first. His was faster, but Lou's was higher.
Former library director Ray McKenna asked that this be read into the minutes. And out of respect for his 30 years of service, I've agreed to do that. Dear City of Economock Mayor and common council members, I have been thinking a lot about the 2023 budget process you are currently involved in. I believe the problem with your process is that you have lost sight of what the departments really represent. This is something that happens to many elected officials and bureaucrats at all levels of government. What it really means when you say you are cutting the library of a recreation department or police or DPW budget requests is that you are cutting services to your constituents. The library does not operate in a vacuum, nor does the, any other city department. The library is not an entity unto itself, but it is made up of citizens who use its services. When you cut departmental budgets, you impact people. The reason any department exists is to provide services. When you cut department budgets, in order to preserve a contingency fund, you negatively impact your constituents unnecessarily. Please reconsider your recent actions regarding the budget and find a better way so as not to significantly affect your constituents. Sincerely, Ray McKenna.
Alderman Kavieski.
Real quick, this Thursday at 6 o'clock at the City of Economock Public Safety Building, Lieutenant Shreng is going to be conducting a active assailant training along with Western Lakes Fire District. This will be the third active assailant training program for the general public. It's been received very well the last two times, last few times it was held at the Economock Arts Center. It's nice to have the facility available to do it by the PD. There will be a couple of resource tables in, in the, in the front of that area. And I highly recommend that anybody within the city and surrounding area attend. You never know where those situations are going to occur. It's not just an active shooter. It could be somebody with a gun. It could be somebody with a car. It could be somebody looking to do harm on a mass scale. So Lieutenant Shreng is, does an amazing program. And Western Lakes deals with some of the initial first aid responses that could be associated with those incidents. Again, highly recommend it. I think we're the only community that I know of that does something like that for the general public. So if you have had that training in a, in a workplace, it's usually pretty specific to the workplace. This is more general in nature. And if you haven't done it recently, go get a refresher. To Ms. Owen's point, it is Veterans Day next week and there are five points that I'd like to just call out. Veterans Day is a state and federal holiday. Don't expect any mail on, on Veterans Day. It's common to observe two minutes of silence. The Be There Campaign raises awareness about veterans and military suicide prevention, which I think we need to be very much aware of. And you can volunteer and, and donate your time to VA. My thanks to all those who have served.
I'm Alderman Altman Cloth.
As a member of the library board as well as a member of the council, I just want to thank Mr., Mr., was it Ray McKenna? For his years of service as our library director. But kind of in the words of a fellow library director, or library board member, words matter. And I would hope that someone who served as a library director for 30 years would recognize that we are not cutting the budget. We are reducing the ask and they are still going into 2023 with more money than they went into 2022. Second thing on Ms. Owen's comment, as I kind of disclosed last week or last meeting, I work for Silver Circle Sports. And we have probably one of our most amazing races of the year, which is Veterans Day. And it's put on by a company that's owned by a veteran and we get lots of veterans that come and run the event. We actually have one gentleman who is well into his 80s, who is a Navy vet that runs with us every year. And it's just an incredible group of people. So go on their website and sign up and hope to see you.
Alderman Rosak.
Yeah, they're actually kind of related comments. The, the letter from Mr. McKenna, while interesting, is also interesting for another perspective, not just that he was a library director, but he also doesn't live in the city. So he doesn't pay city taxes. And the city pays 140,000 above what the minimum requirement is from the county for the library. To that related note, I still want our council to look into a policy decision at some point on citizen comments. When we consider citizen comments, we should be considering comments from our citizens, the people we represent. And when we have controversial issues, whatever they are, whether they're chickens, library funding, dogs, whatever, I'd really like to hear from the people that I represent, the constituents, the people that pay taxes in this city. When we, when we allow this open forum where we let people roll in from towns all around the area to tell us how to run our city, I think we should consider some type of policy on when we're going to allow that to happen. So if you're a developer coming in, you're going to build, you own land, yeah, you can comment on the project. But to hear from people in Ashopin and Watertown and all sorts of other places around the city telling us how to run our city and how to spend our tax dollars, I think we should look at that. Because frankly, we sit here for a lot of hours, we spend a lot of time at meetings. And to spend hours listening to people that don't live in our community is, is, is becoming a drain. And I think we should look into what that policy should look like and how we're going to implement that. So I'd like us to look at that at some point, Mayor, if we can, or to Mark, you know, whether that's a discussion or we, we float some type of, you know, I don't know, policy, I'd like to look into that.
Well, and just from a mayor's comments and well, if anybody else has some of the Aldermen, what we've done is Lori put together a really nice event calendar for us a few months ago, which is what Mark and, and I and Lori use in developing the budget and the, not the budget, the agenda. And so that's exactly what Mark does, his little calendar is right in front of him. And so what we're trying to do really hard is when there are things you want us to look into, we're trying to jot those down so that we don't miss them. Because there have been times, especially during that pandemic time, when there was stuff we missed. stuff we missed. And I think at least this way we have it documented. So we even have a section where we document stuff with no timelines, no ideas, but we know where it came from. So hats off to Lori for putting that together and for Mark for implementing that. But if you want to see what he does, you can just come and look at what he does. It's, it's something that changes dramatically. So it's just something we use internally. But my hats off to the staff and I want you to understand the staff and the department has our listening to all of you as Alderman. We're just trying to figure out and prioritize. And when those priorities don't match yours, just give us a phone call and let us know because they're, they're working really hard to try to make that work. I kind of jumped around. Are there any other comments from Alderman? Are we sure? Well, I'd like to just wish everybody a good rest of the week, wonderful Veterans Day, um, uh, remembrance for next week. And, um, thank you, everybody. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Kowieski.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank everyone.